Next, Johannes Moses leads the Bavarian Chamber Philharmonic.
You good for us, Jim? We have everyone in place and I'd like to welcome you to this four o'clock, February 21st meeting of the City Planning Commission. The first item on the agenda is approval of the summary minutes from February 7th. Are there comments, corrections, or motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. If the move, motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It would matter as passed. Item number two is to conduct a public hearing to receive comments and address questions from abutting property owners regarding the proposed annexation of East Magnolia Road and Markley Road. Does the staff have a comment?
Yeah, I don't know if our microphone's on here. Now I think we're on. This item is a little bit different from anything that we've done in the past because we have, the City of Salina has never been asked to annex a roadway before that didn't have public right-of-way. So John, if you could get our graphics up, we'll kind of walk you through this. But historically, the City of Salina's policy has been wait to annex a roadway until the land on both sides of the road is annexed into the city. So, for instance, on Magnolia Road east of Ohio, that property's kind of been developed and annexed into the property in phases. And so you had the Mayfair addition and Southern Baptist Church, starting at Ohio, and then you've got Eastview Estates and Golden Eagle, as you move that way. And as the property's platted and it's brought into the city, right-of-way is dedicated. And as the city gets on both sides, then we annex the road into the city. And the property that is outside the city, or where the city's just on one side, that roadway has not been annexed. And one of the purposes for that is to not have roadways where, like, one half of the road is city jurisdiction and the other half of the road's county jurisdiction, or you drive and you're in the city and then you drive for a few hundred yards and you're in the county and then you're back in the city again. So, it's been pretty uniform that from Ohio east, where we have both sides of Magnolia Road and right-of-way we've annexed, and where we haven't, we don't. The county, current County Commission does not particularly like that policy, and there was an amendment that was passed in 2005 in the legislature that said that if the city annexes up to one side of a road or highway, and the County Commission may put the city on notice and ask that that roadway be made a part of the city. The city attorney has interpreted that to apply only in those situations where the city actually holds right-of-way. So, as we work our way back towards where the city limits is, from here back, the City of Salina will own as public right-of-way all the right-of-way from Magnolia Road from here back. From here going this way and up, the, what is present there is a roadway easement. And what a roadway easement means is that the county has come along and obtained permission to build a roadway across people's property, but their property still extends to the center of the roadway or the section line. So what we have is a situation here where the, Saline County's asking the city to annex this property, but the property that the roadway lies on is actually owned by the abutting private property owner. So, there's also a statutory provision in annexation that states that you cannot annex property over, without the consent of the abutting property owner or the owner of that unplatted tract. So, all of this property here, starting here, is outside the city limits and it's unplatted, which means that those owners, starting up at this point and all the way around here, own to the center of Markley and Magnolia. So, we have sent letters out to all those owners inviting them to either submit comments or come to this public hearing. And the purpose of that public hearing is to explain what the impacts or the non-impacts would be from the city annexing that property. And so, what is, would occur is if this roadway itself is annexed into the city, it will not change the ownership status. It will still be owned by the underlying owner. The only difference will be is that instead of Saline County patrolling that road for traffic control, speeding, responding to accidents, patching of the road, snow plowing, all those things would be done by the City of Salina and not by Saline County. And the other question that's come up is, well, if this strip of land here is still privately owned property and the city annexes it, does that make it subject to the city's property tax? And technically, it does, but it also does not because the county appraiser, if there's a roadway easement there, assigns that strip a zero value. So even though the private property owner owns that strip today, they're not paying any taxes on it. And if they're not paying any taxes to the county, if it comes into the city, they're not going to pay any taxes to the city. And the city having annexed that strip would not impact the rest of this property, which would still be under the county's jurisdiction for land use, zoning, and all those other things. So, the purpose of the hearing today is to invite property owners here, to learn about what that means to them, and to offer any comments, pro or con, or to ask questions and get those into a public hearing record. So I guess I'll start by seeing if the members of the planning commission have any questions. This, like I said, is relatively unprecedented because if it's a situation where the city or the public has right-of-way, then you simply annex the property. So, the city had right-of-way for South Ohio, so we annexed down to Schilling Road. The city had right-of-way for Schilling Road, so we annexed it. We had right-of-way for South Ninth Street, we annexed it. And this is a situation where the county thinks that the primary impact of travel and traffic on these roadways is city-generated traffic, and they want us to take these roads into the city and maintain them. And again, this normally doesn't come up because normally, when we're dealing with properties, we're dealing with properties that are adjacent to subdivisions or adjacent to the city and have public right-of-way. KDOT does not build roads in roadway easements, but the county has historically, and so when we inherit that situation, that's a situation we run into.
Dean, why doesn't the county, why doesn't the county take the easement and then transfer it over to us?
Well, the city's policy in the past has been, and my examples would be South Ninth Street or Schilling Road. At one time, there was no right-of-way for Schilling Road from Ninth Street over to Ohio. The county went in and acquired right-of-way for that, and so the title to the road was in the county. They transferred it over to the city and we just took over ownership and maintenance. Here, for whatever historical reasons, when the county built Markley Road, they just went to the owners and got a roadway easement and not right-of-way. So, one option would be to tell the county, "Well, go out and obtain this as right-of-way and then come talk to us about annexation." But that, that answer was not acceptable to them, so they want us to annex this. And the city commission has indicated to them that they are willing to take over maintenance responsibility for this section of roadway. So, essentially, what it would mean is that this entire loop here for posting speed limits, plowing snow, responding to accidents, all of those things would be city jurisdiction and there would be no more county maintenance or jurisdiction.
And in the normal circumstance, it'd be, we would take responsibility, city would take responsibility by statute when they, on their.
Right. What would happen in other sections here is that you'd have, this would all be platted into subdivisions here and they would dedicate right-of-way, and this would be platted for subdivisions here, and they would dedicate right-of-way as part of their subdivision plat. And then you would have, you'd have right-of-way for the full street, and it'd be public ownership, so the city would just take it over when it had both sides. But here, they're asking the city to take it over even though most of the property that actually abuts the road is outside the city limits.
Dean, well, will that property, should the city include that in within the city limits? Will the property that's currently county property, that road will stay easement then until such time those proper, parcels are platted?
Yes. Unless for some, unless for some reason, I mean, if the owner wants to dedicate it as right-of-way, we'd certainly take it. And this over here, abutting Magnolia Hills Estates, is right-of-way.
Uh-huh.
And Mr. Norton has dedicated right-of-way for Magnolia. I'm sure if we visited with him, he'd probably be, if he understands that this is roadway easement, he'd probably be happy to make it right-of-way. One of the differences that we want to make clear about roadway easements and right-of-way and why roadway easements, from the city's perspective, are not good things, roadway easements only allow roads. They don't allow phone lines, they don't allow electrical lines, they don't allow gas lines, they don't allow water lines or sewer lines. So, Mr. Norton, recognizing that over here, said, "Well, I, roadway easement is too restrictive. I want the utility companies to be able to use that area." And so, he said, "I'm happy to make that right-of-way instead of roadway easement because I want the utilities to have the ability to be in there." So, one thing we want to make clear is that whether the city annexes this or doesn't annex it, this roadway easement is for the road only and it doesn't allow for water lines, sewer lines, gas lines, any of those others. It's simply for the road. Whereas, in places where we have right-of-way, all the franchise utilities can use it. So, the main advantage of right-of-way over roadway easement is that right-of-way allows all the people who supply utilities to use that right-of-way to connect properties up.
Mr. Stack, could you give us a brief engineering aspect of how that road looks right now and also a, any possible plans for the future for that road?
For Markley, it's a 24-foot of blacktop with a chip seal on it currently. It's got ditches that are, I can't remember how maintainable they are, but it's basically just a rural county road with a decent chip seal on it right now. It's in not-too-bad of shape, from what we can tell. It's been maintained all right. Magnolia, I think it's pretty similar. I can't remember if it was chip sealed as far as the maintenance goes. Does that answer your question? They're typically, they're just basically an urban road, or.
There's no big issues with it, right?
No, they're just basically a rural road with, you know, some asphalt and some chip seals over the top of them. They're currently functioning how they should. No real signs of serious need of repair. They're in decent shape, and that's another reason the county felt like it's not a real burden at this time to give to us. They've maintained them fairly recently, and the city commissioners didn't think it was a big deal to take them on at this point. It actually gives our snow plow drivers good route. It's hard for them to, actually, in practice, they act, they do some of this work anyway because it's, they have to go plow Markley. It's hard to turn around, well, Magnolia going one direction, it's hard to try to figure out a place to turn around. You can just go all the way up to Markley, turn around, come back and do, it's just kind of a loop. So it's a fair request for a snow plowing that we didn't think was an issue either, as far as just our route goes. Condition, the long-term plans for these roads? Markley, we don't have any real plans for, that I know of at this point. East Magnolia has had talk of the bridge replacement and extensions all the way to Markley in the past as a possibility, but so far, that has not been funded. We are in the process of going to be constructing East Magnolia to just about the bridge, basically, just to the west side of the bridge. So any future CIPs or construction would be, have to be funded by another commissioner at some, at some point in the future. But it hasn't, it hasn't surfaced lately as a hot topic for improvements, but the city's definitely growing that way, and comp plan says it'll continue to develop in this area. So we see, at some point, there'll be upgrades to these roads eventually.
Is the traffic count on that roadway, at times I go out there and it seems like it's pretty brisk. Is it still two lanes good for that?
Still adequate, yeah. It's eight or nine thousand cars per day on Magnolia once you get near Ohio. But as you go to the east, it's in the two-to-three thousand range, so it's for two lanes, that's okay. The Markley intersection will be one that we're going to check. If this all goes through, we're going to check that pretty soon, just to see what kind of traffic counts are there for, you know, possible signals at some point, just to see where it's at. It is one that we get some complaints on. It's during, of course, Sunday morning church or something, that it's a fairly busy intersection at certain times, but probably, we don't believe it warrants a signal or any even talk of a signal at this point. But it would be nice to have a baseline, here's where we're at now, and then in a few years, keep taking counts on, in that area, just to see if it's, how fast it's growing and if there's going to be a need in the future for upgrades or intersection improvements of some sort.
Dean, Highland Meadows has been annexed in the city, is that correct?
Yes, it has, but we did not annex the road or half the road with it. We left the road in the county, because again, our policy was that we don't take a road in until the city has both sides. And since there was just one side, the subdivision was annexed, but the road is not, so.
But you didn't take the right-of-way on that front side there?
We were convinced by the surveyor who did the subdivision that that was right-of-way and that was incorrect. So, if we had it to do over again, it would have been, but the subdivision boundary is the city limit line there, and it did not extend, so that would have to be dedicated separately.
Because it makes sense to me. If we have the soccer complex, there'd be right-of-way from there, and then if you have Highland Meadows right-of-way, you're only missing a small piece. I don't know that you'd need right-of-way on the north side.
Ironically, we have right-of-way from Markley all the way east to Holmes, and from right here, all the way east to Holmes. And it was this strip right here that the surveyor that prepared that plat indicated that was right-of-way, but it turned out not.
But given that being the same ownership as the corner that dedicated the right-of-way, wouldn't it be easy to go get that from him?
Yes. I think that would be, then we would have a continuous strip, basically, from here to here. And that would all be right-of-way.
And talk to us a little bit about the north half of the road right-of-way then. Will that be, will you attempt to acquire that quickly once this is annexed?
Well, it can, it can work as roadway easement. The only way that that would run into difficulty is if there's a desire for any of those owners to have utilities run to their property, then that would be the motivation. There's a possibility, say this corner here, if it were platted, there's kind of, Mr. O'Neil has some work here underway. If in the long term, this were platted into multiple building sites, then we'd have a plat that would have right-of-way dedicated here and here, and the rest of that would occur over phases.
Typically, right-of-way is dedicated at plat, so that's why Highland Meadows Hamlet's kind of a oddball. We should've, we should've got it there and.
John, if you could put up that southeast Salina master plan map. Also wanted to show you that there is a project that Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities, is working on to get a sanitary sewer pump station that would be placed approximately in this area that would provide sewer service to all the area that's identified there. Highland Meadows Hamlet has a pump station today. People up here in Valley View are on septic systems and do not have access to sewer and would like that. There's some lots here in Magnolia Hills Estates that are too low to get into the gravity sewer, and they would come back to that pump station. So basically, all of this area here would be serviced by that pump station. And so, the lines for that may or may not line up or correspond with Markley, but if that were the case, then converting the 50-foot roadway easement to a 50-foot right-of-way would be beneficial for utilities. And we would discuss that at that time. But that, that kind of gives you an idea that there, as Mr. Stack mentioned, this is in the growth path for the city. And there's one other interesting situation out here, and that's the fact that on this side, over here in Highland Meadows Hamlet, that's in the service territory for Westar. And this little pocket right here is in the service territory for DSNO Rural Electric Cooperative. And to date, the city has not had a franchise agreement with DSNO, so as property comes into the city, it tends to convert over from DSNO to Westar. But we do have the odd situation where DSNO's territory's out here, Westar is here, but there's a little pocket here that is a DSNO rural service area.
Dan, is it safe to say that the widening of Magnolia that's currently been funded is going to be on the south side primarily, is that correct, of Magnolia?
The part, the widening that we're proposing is right on the center line, so it's, but it's not the same annexation as this. Is that right, Dean?
I understand. I'm just, I'm trying to look at lining this up eventually. You're moving to the south of Magnolia, not to the.
To the north. It's basically, it's split.
You're going to widen on both sides?
Yep.
Okay. So my question is, is later on, if the people who own that center section that's in the county, if that never gets, I mean, 20 years later, they still say, "You know what? We like being in the county. Our houses are fine. We're not going to subdivide this, and we need to expand and widen Magnolia from the bridge out to Markley Road." Here comes a problem. If we only have.
Go buy the right-of-way for it at that point. So that's, that's where the right-of-way, unless it's platted typically, is a little harder to get, because it's, it costs some money, basically. There's value, and you have to figure out, okay, what is that value? Even though arguably, it's still a road, a roadway easement and a right-of-way aren't a lot different. So that's the big question in the legal world, is how many sticks, is what they call it. You have so many sticks with an easement, you have a few more sticks with a roadway, right-of-way, you have the whole nine yards with fee title. It's way more than you want to get into, but it's, there's typically a value associated with that, and it's a negotiated type of arrangement with each property owner, which we had to do that on East Magnolia currently with four property owners. So we had to go figure out what that right-of-way's worth. How do we get it transferred over to right-of-way?
But the current commission, Dean, has had that conversation. They feel like they want to take that on and then buy that later, rather than the county saying, "Look, get your ducks in order and then we'll take it on."
The city commission is primarily looking at it from the standpoint of, are the roadways in good shape? Is it going to be a big maintenance liability for the city if we take it on, or to take it on for snow plowing? And, you know, the fact of the matter is that to get from here to over here, I mean, Salina Police Department and vehicles are using that anyway as part of the loop.
It's mostly city traffic.
It's predominantly city traffic, so it makes a lot of sense. The only thing that makes it more complicated and why we're having a hearing today is that we're being asked to annex roadway easement that's actually privately owned as opposed to public right-of-way. So I do believe we have some of those owners present here, and if they had any comments or questions they'd like to have clarified, that would be the purpose of this hearing.
Any other remarks from the commissioners? I think we should hear from the public. Are there some of you that are the property owners or interested parties that want to step up to the podium and address the commission? And if you would please, we'd like to have your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Tom O'Neill. I own the property at 2409 East Magnolia Road, which would be the northwest corner of Markley and Magnolia. I am currently underway on building, I have a shop already built there, and I'm going to build a home there this spring. My, I think Dean has answered most of my questions, that everything stays exactly the same for us until right-of-way is, needs to be acquired. Is that correct?
That's correct. You would still own to the center, Markley, and to the center of Magnolia, and the fact that a strip of that is in the city is not affecting the rest of your property. And it's not, it's not a valued, it's got a zero value for property tax today, so the fact that it would be in the city wouldn't affect that either.
Okay. So any other issues with the ditches or the waterways and things like that along that property would not be, this would not be the proper time to even consider those things?
Yeah. The only, and I think you've got most of your access points established. The primary change would be if you, in the future, were proposing any additional access points along here, then you would need to be talking with the city engineering staff instead of the county, because you'd be connecting to a city roadway instead of a county one. So driveway connections, things like that, you'd be working with city staff instead of the county.
Drainage concerns would go to our city street guys as well, if there's ditching that needs to be done or some kind of a.
Yeah. If a ditch is obstructed and not draining or something like that, you'd be working with us instead of the county. But otherwise, you would.
But this is not the time to discuss those issues at this point.
Yeah. Other than to know that in the future, another driveway connection or clogged-up ditches would be addressed to city, not the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to comment to us or ask questions instead?
So only one.
We had a question, but it would be pretty well cleared after the question.
Okay.
We have a property that's certified, yes.
Are you the Broses?
The Broses, yeah.
Okay. So yeah, they're up in the, they're actually right in here. And so, yeah, it would be the same thing that you have a strip there, if it came into the city. It's got zero value for property tax today. It would have zero value for property tax tomorrow. The only change would be that if you wanted to change or modify your driveway connection to Markley or something, you'd be talking with the city. But as far as anything about your property, you'd still be dealing with Saline County, DSNO, all of that, so. Other than maintenance, there's no real change. But that, again, that was the purpose of this hearing and our letter, to make you understand that it actually is legally your property, but it's not going to impact you if the city takes it over. Fifty from the center of the road, that would not change.
I think maybe my wife talked to you about this, but I wasn't real clear on it. On fire protection and things like that, that's still all county.
Right. What I explained to her is that there are city water lines out here, but unless your property is within the city limits, the fire response is going to be from the rural fire district, probably at Simpson and Old Highway 40, unless we do have provisions where the fire department will enter into a fire service contract for properties outside the city limits. So, the one positive here is, and it doesn't show up clearly here, but there's a water line that runs along Magnolia and up to the Markley Tower here, and then there's a, the sewer line runs on the west side and then wraps around the other side of the Covenant Church, but there. side of the Covenant Church, but there, that will not change. Annexing the roadway, all the rural attributes of this property will still, it'll still be DSNO, it will still be Rural Fire Protection, all of those things. And the only way to change that would be to annex your property into the city.
And can you tell me which side of the road the interceptor or the new pump station and those lines are proposed?
Because I understand it, it's on the west side, approximately right here across from Highland, or across from Magnolia Hills Estates. And so, the idea is that it would come to here and then go across and go, this is where the interceptor goes east. So it would line up just about there, but it would be on the west side.
So there would actually be no effect of that on my property at all at that corner?
The only thing that would be of impact, some of the owners out here have been contacted by people about granting easements, but as far as the route for how the discharge gets from Highland Meadows Hamlet over to here, there's been some angled routes, there've been some square routes, but nothing could happen unless somebody comes and talks to you about an easement.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other remarks from the public? Commissioners, have you had any other additional thoughts come to mind?
Dean, what's the estimated cost of buying the right-of-way for the city? If we, in the future, that looks like the route we're going to be going.
Well, as Mr. Stack mentioned, there are, there's different methodologies for doing that. In some cases, we're paying property owners the difference between the impact of a roadway easement and a right-of-way. In other cases, where the property's platted, the right-of-way is simply dedicated. In other cases, in the case of Mr. Norton, where he sees a benefit to it being right-of-way, the city's not paying anything. The owner is simply dedicating that as right-of-way to the city, because they see it as being beneficial to be able to have utilities in there. So it, the, it should be a relatively minimal impact, because the way an appraiser looks at it, it's already subject to a roadway easement, and you're only paying for the difference between that and, because you can't use it or build in it or anything, it's occupied by a road. So there's just a incremental difference between what's roadway easement and right-of-way. And as Mr. Stack indicated, it's kind of on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah. The appraisers have been not real consistent on it so far, but it's some percentage of the land value, whatever that percentage is, they deem applicable at that time. It's not, it's not 100% of the land value, it's not 0%, it's some percentage of that.
Dean, I have a question. If the land or the property owners on the north side of Magnolia and to the east or to the west of Markley, if they wanted to be annexed into the city limits, would this help or hurt that process, or would it make any difference? And could they be annexed in as individual?
I think it would help from the standpoint that it wouldn't be so much of an island, it would be a contiguous situation. So if down the road, Mr. O'Neil wanted to annex his corner into the property, into the city, it would actually strengthen the case for that, because the road's already in the city, he's got access from a city street. If we look long-term, 20 years or whatever, I would think that that whole little island here will eventually be in the city limits. That's a longer-term picture, but that's the direction the city's going. So the commission doesn't need to take any real formal action, other than if you, if you understand all those, you could make a recommendation that these roadways be annexed into the city in the form of a motion. And then I have a favor to ask of Mr. O'Neil and the Broses, if after hearing all this, they don't have any concern or objection to that. We've got a little sheet over there in front of John and Crystal for just the owners who've been notified to sign on there, indicating that they don't have any objection to having the road brought into the city.
Well, then, at the direction of our city commission, on their behalf, would...
So you've received your comments and input from affected property owners, and if after hearing all that, you're comfortable with this, then a motion to recommend that these roadways be annexed into the city would be appropriate.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. I make a motion that we annex the county roadways under policy number 92-1 into the city.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Anything else on that item, Dean?
No. This next item's going to be covered by Mr. Hirsch.
Okay. Item three, our application Z9880.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular application is filed by Jason Ko, who is the owner of the Dimeru Steakhouse on Crawford here in town. And he's proposed to develop Lot 5, Block 1 of the replat of the Auburndale addition, which is the property just south of the entrance ring road into the Auburndale subdivision here. The property is a 60,200-square-foot lot, 1.38 acres, and has a few limitations, being an outlot of the Auburndale subdivision. The limitation that directly affects this property is a limitation of one pole sign having no more than 120 square feet and no more than a maximum height of 30 feet tall, and the requirement that a final site plan be approved by the planning commission, which is why we're here. John, if you could pull up the floor plan real quick. This is what the applicant is proposing. It's going to be a similar steakhouse to the Dimeru on Crawford, where there are 12 grill-top tables, where the food is prepared at the table in front of the customers. In addition, this particular restaurant, unlike the Dimeru restaurant on Crawford, is also going to have a substantial general dining area with a preparation kitchen, where food could be ordered, prepared in the kitchen, and then brought out. There is also a sushi bar and a regular bar here, and tatami rooms with tatami tables, which are low-elevation tables, where you sit on the floor and eat at the tables in that style of eating. The lot coverages for this development, we have a 12.1% lot coverage with a 7,000 through 230-square-foot restaurant building. The paving percentage is 52%, and is substantially to the west and north of the building, with the remainder of the property, 35% plus, being landscaping dedicated along 9th Street, along the interior ring road to the north, and the interior ring road just to the east, and a little bit between the building and the property to the south, Lot 4. Or actually, I think that's Lot 6. So the building is oriented so that it, the front vestibule, which is this extension here of the building, faces 9th Street, and that's where you would enter the property or enter the building. The exterior of the building is going to be a combination of two different types of brick with some stone accents and parapets. You can see here, the parapets go up a little bit taller in elevation to the rest of the building. The actual height of the building is 15 feet, with the parapets going up to as high as 20 feet in some locations. The traffic is, as we mentioned, maintained primarily off of the interior ring roads that were proposed as part of the Auburndale subdivision, and developed and constructed when the Lowe's site was developed. So you would enter off of 9th Street here, or you could come off of Schilling here, or again, off of 9th Street down across from Riffle Drive. There is no access permitted along this 9th Street frontage. It is all restricted access. So the access would be limited on 9th Street, but yet would be sufficient for all of those outlots within the Auburndale subdivision, while preserving the intersection of Schilling and 9th Street, keep cars away from that intersection, as it is a prominent intersection within our community. The applicant has proposed 74 off-street parking spaces, with two of them being regular van-accessible... No, the site plan, John. With two of them being regular van, or regular accessible, and two of them being van-accessible, ADA handicap parking stalls. In calculating the required off-street parking for this restaurant facility, it's a little bit of a different situation than we normally would have for a restaurant, because of the grill-top tables that are utilized in this particular restaurant, which we normally don't see. Typically, we calculate parking one of two ways. We look at the total dining floor area, and we require one parking stall for every 50 square feet of dining floor area, or one parking stall for every three seats at the maximum seating capacity. This particular development is proposing 199 seats, which results in a 66 off-street parking spaces. However, the total dining floor area is 3,833 square feet, which results in 77 off-street parking spaces. So the 77 exceeds the 74 that the applicant is proposing. However, when staff is looking at this, normally, you don't have that large of a discrepancy, where you have 11 different, a difference of 11 parking spaces. And we think that in looking at this, the most appropriate calculation may be to look at the seating capacity in lieu of the dining floor area, simply because we have such a large area dedicated to the grill-top area, where essentially, you have both kitchen activities taking place and preparation activities in addition to the actual dining that takes place, which is what, you normally don't have that. Normally, you have a dining area, which is similar to the proposed general dining with a kitchen, where all the preparation takes place. But in this particular area, which is a substantial portion of the restaurant, you have a combination of the two. So that's something that the commission will need to look at, is what is the most appropriate off-street parking for this particular development? If we can go to the drainage plan, please, John. The drainage for the Auburndale development is designed so that all of the water goes to a detention pond by the Lowe's store. And that detention pond is designed to contain the water runoff for all 33 and 1/2 acres of the total development. The engineer currently has proposed an inlet here at the southwest corner, which is kind of hard to make out, but there's an inlet there, and an inlet also near the northeast corner. All of the water is, in this area, is to propose to go to that inlet. All the area on the west end here is proposed to go to that inlet, and then piped underground to that detention pond that's by the Lowe's site there. One of the concerns that engineering staff has is the amount of water runoff coming off of the building and east of the building, being shed onto the ring road that runs just to the east of the property. And the area between the building and the property due to the south, the water is being proposed to run onto the neighboring property. So while substantially, the site plan looks to drain effectively and correctly, there are some minor changes that, and amendments that the project engineer will have to work out with city engineering staff. We don't see there being any major reconfigurations of the site plan or major changes, just some small amendments that need to be worked out between staff and the project engineer. The applicant currently is not proposing a sign, a pole sign. However, in the future, they may want to resurrect one in the northwest corner of the property. So we would maintain that the limitations that are put on this planned commercial district would carry forward, that being the limitation of one pole, no more than 120 square feet, no more than 30 feet in height. The applicant is proposing three smaller wall signs, one on the north, one on the east, and one on the west. They're not proposing one on the south. The three that they are proposing are estimated to total 61 square feet, and all of them would require a site permit application separate to a building permit or this final site plan application. The landscaping for this property, as was noted, is a little over 35%, with over 21,000 square feet of landscaping. The minimum requirement along 9th Street is 4,185 square feet. The applicant is proposing 100% green space in that area, which results in 5,231 square feet, which exceeds the minimum requirement for that area. However, staff would note that the proposed plantings here on the planting plan are going to be in conflict with the overhead power lines in this area. This is a somewhat unique development, in which we cannot have any shade trees proposed there. And because they are required to have eight, a minimum of eight tree units, typically, you would want to use shade trees, simply because it's a, there's a one-to-one ratio that's factored in when using shade trees. When you're looking at ornamental trees, you only have a ratio of three ornamental trees per one tree unit, so it's a little more efficient to use shade trees. But in this particular instance, since we can't because of overhead power lines, we're going to have to look at somehow coming up with a plan that implements ornamental shade or ornamental trees and shrubs for the parking lot screening in lieu of the shade trees. So I think in talking with the city forester, there may be a possibility of getting three clusters of three ornamental trees out front, and leaving this particular elm shade tree here. And that would get us one tree unit, two tree units, three tree units, four tree units, and then having 30 shrubs possibly along there would give us seven, seven total tree units. That would get us close to eight, but it couldn't quite get us to eight. So I think that's something that the planning commission needs to consider, is how many ornamental tree or trees would we have in lieu of having the shade trees for our tree units? Another landscape issue that has come up is the proposed trees down here. These southwestern pine trees are very susceptible to pine wilt in this area. And the soil is also not acidic enough in South Salina for them to survive. And the city forester has recommended that a shade tree, that three shade trees from the recommended tree list be substituted for those pine trees that are proposed. The applicant is also proposing a dumpster corral here, that would be a brick exterior, five and 1/2 feet tall, with a solid gate for their screening, so that would meet all of the screening purposes. So at this point, the commission would have the opportunity to either approve or disapprove the proposed site plan as it's submitted. They could approve it with conditions of approval, or they could recommend that the plan be revised and resubmitted. There are a few staff recommendations that staff would make, as we see this plan being substantially complete, with a few revisions needed that could be reviewed administratively with these conditions. The two most notable conditions would be the landscaping condition that we talked about, somehow figuring out a way to... somehow figuring out a way to come up with a number of ornamental trees that would meet the intent of the landscaping ordinance and the screening purposes for that parking lot between Ninth Street and the building. And the condition that the city engineer work with the project engineer to completely, not completely revise, but complete the drainage plan so that all of the water does get to that pond, with the exception of the six and a half percent that is going towards the Ninth Street drainage ditch. I think at this point, staff would have any questions that the commission would have, and answer them the best we can.
Questions for Mr. Hurd? There being none, could we hear from the applicant or his representative?
My name is Ken Beaverley. I represent Beaverley Architects and also Jason Cow, the owner and developer of the Maru Japanese Steakhouse. We've listened to the comments, and we are willing to meet the landscape requirements. And as we speak, my, the civil engineer is working with the city as far as making those required adjustments to the drainage plan. So we're anxious to get this spilling underway, and we'll do everything we can to make sure it meets with the city's approval.
Staff has mentioned seven recommendations to us. I think they covered them all there. Have you seen those?
I've seen them, and we have no problem with them.
Other questions of Mr. Beaverley? I'll bring it back to the commission. Their questions or comments?
Well, in regards to the parking lot issue, I don't see a problem with that. They've exceeded, if you go by seats alone, they've exceeded the number of parking spaces required by seating and by square foot. As Mr. Hurd said, that the grills are, you know, not part of the actual floor plan per se, and so I wouldn't have any problem at all going with the number of parking spaces that they had listed.
I'd be ready to make a motion if you're...
Mr. Chairman, make a motion?
Go ahead.
Z ninety-eight dash eight E. Make a motion to approve with the seven staff recommendations.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nice-looking project.
Going to be open by October, is that what the paper said? It's pretty ambitious. Best of luck.
Item number four, continued discussion of the public use district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have, for your consideration, a, I guess we'll call it a complete draft of a public use district that addresses all of the, all of the factors that would be in a standalone zoning district. And so we have added a design or purpose section, which is the first section there. There are three subcategories. There's a subcategory for primarily public facilities, a subcategory for what we would call educational facilities, which we indicate there could be public and private, and it would be up to the Catholic Diocese and Salina Christian Academy, whether they wanted to have their property zoned with that designation. But it was drafted in that fashion. And then we have an exposition facilities district that would be set up to address primarily the Kenwood Park area. We have suggested minimum lot area, lot width, lot depth, setback, and lot coverage and site coverage regulations. And then on the use limitations, we have some language there that deals with buffering, recommending that there be a twenty-five-foot width buffer between any of these public-type uses and any adjoining residential lot, and then addressing exterior lighting. What you will not see in there is anything specific that relates to signage. And what we did was went down and looked at all of our districts. And what we've generally done is not address signage in the actual district regulations, but actually put them in Article Ten signs. So if you are comfortable with this as a set of district regulations, and what we would ask you to do later in the, in the meeting would be to initiate a text amendment for Article Ten, the sign regulations, where we would come back to you with the actual recommended language for sign regulations and limitations within the public use district. So you would be looking at that and making a recommendation on that separately. But this is the first time we've actually got this put into an actual full set of regulations. John, I guess, have you got a map? Do we, do we have that map that Mr. Ganzamula prepared for us? Obviously, we're going to have to do some, some blowing up here. But as, as we indicated, the Phase One is looking at the, the content, the body of a set of district regulations to make sure that all the uses we want to accommodate can be accommodated, and that we have appropriate lot sizes, lot coverages, heights, things of that nature. And then, once that's done, then you have to go back and identify the parcels that would be mapped with that designation. So what we have on the screen today, and you can kind of, if you, if you start from the bottom, these are areas that are in some form of public use. Like this is Schilling Elementary School, and then some associated public park land. Next to it, this is a substation, and what we're recommending is that utility substations be identified as a public use. This happens to be electrical substation. We have Jerry Ivy Park, South High School, Soccer Complex, a new park in Golden Eagle area, Stewart School. So these are all areas that we have identified that if, if this new district were created and adopted, then the second step would be to go in and identify, notify all these property owners, which is primarily going to be USD three oh five, the City of Salina, and to a lesser extent, Saline County. And then there would be a public hearing to see whether those properties should be rezoned. Most of them are residential today. A couple of them are agricultural. For instance, East Crawford Recreation Area, and I think the Soccer Complex are agricultural today. But that, that would be the second step. So we wanted to give you an idea when we're talking about what properties would be designated as for public use. That is the idea. So purpose today is to have in your packets the fully developed district with all the proposed regulations and uses, and to just get some feedback from you, whether you think we're close, whether we missed something, or we missed entirely.
And you're saying the sign regulations will be in a...
What we would do is, looking back at each, each, this, all of the city's sign rules and regulations are in Article Ten, and so there would be a subsection within Article Ten that would be sign regulations that would apply in the public use district. And we'd bring that back to you and develop language for that, as was discussed with the, basically, the residential scale signage, the arterial street signage, and then the larger public event-type changeable copy signs that we discussed at your last meeting, that would all come back in a separate item. But this, this is there in a complete form that is the standard format for our zoning district regulations and addresses all the aspects, which would be uses and use regulations. And just to get an idea, whether you think this is close to what you were expecting.
Looks good to me.
You know, I want to say, first of all, I think we've been working on this for a couple of years now, and I appreciate staff's work on this, and I think we've reviewed it several times. From our perspective, from the district's perspective, I think it's well done. And we'll find, no doubt, things as we move through this that we have, may have missed, but I hope we can come back at that time and say, hey, those are items that should have been on there and weren't, because you can't anticipate everything. But I think it's a good move for the community, be very helpful to our district, and hopefully it to think to others, so.
I think with the completion of the component of the sign regulations to go with this, then, you know, the, the idea is to have a balance there, but we've, Mr. Kennedy knows from personal experience, we've had that on city fire station projects and things, trying to take residential district regulations and apply them to projects that are educational or public in nature. I mean, if you stop and think about it, the city's water treatment plant is zoned, R3, multifamily residential. Well, that's kind of a catch-all district, but we think it's a lot more appropriate if the water plant was zoned as a public facility and we had appropriate rules that we could apply. So if, if you say, you know, we feel like we're, we've done our due diligence and we understand everything, if you felt comfortable, I have a feeling that when it lands to the city commission and other city departments and all, look at it, there may be some tweaks. But if, if you are comfortable with this, I mean, you can even make a recommendation that this go on further to the city commission for consideration of adding this to the zoning ordinance. Because as far as these parts of it, I don't know what, other than the sign component that's missing, I don't know that city staff could, could do anything more with this unless you saw something that was glaring. We've tried to be generous with lot coverage and flexible with height, but at the same time, make sure that we have buffers and things in place. So we kind of used the hospital medical district a little bit as a, as a template. But we've, we've looked over the uses, we've gone over the uses with you, and I think that everybody feels there hasn't been any that we've missed.
I'd be comfortable sending it on to the city commission. We've modified this thing, we've got the channel smaller and smaller down to this point, and you guys have done a great job putting it together. It looks great.
One question about agricultural use. And I don't understand really where the, way on the south end of the city between Schilling and Waterwell, the new facility, property purchased by the county, if that's ever in danger of being brought into the city as part of this exposition facilities district. But if it is, it has a lot of excess ground, and it would be good to make agriculture a permitted use down there, is it, to go ahead and have that ground in use. And then, I know it was a pretty, pretty big stretch, but one of the discussions we had about, in the informal discussion about North Ninth Street and the possibility of acquiring some of that floodplain land and floodway land that's not really developable, and adding it to Thomas Park, and that one of the, then the uses of that ground could include something like a publicly-owned orchard or some kind of public agricultural facility.
We know that there is...
Agriculture back in.
We've, we've had kind of a point of emphasis internally on getting some of that cleaned up and being more presentable. I had a meeting today with Mr. Deal, who owns property north of Thomas Park and south of Mid-Kansas mobile homes. And one of the things we, that, we kind of went through all the things that he couldn't do with the property, and he said, well, if that's the case, maybe the county appraiser has it overvalued. And I said, well, maybe he does. But, you know, one of the things that we have done is, is we have written letters for property owners who are impacted by floodway or floodplain things to say, can't build a building on it, you can't do this, you can't do that. And even though it might be zone commercial, it doesn't, it shouldn't be treated like other commercial tracks, because you can't go in there and bring in fill and build up a pad and put a building on it. You literally can't do that. So the, is your thought that if you have, let's say we had public, well, I guess, out at the old Stimel School site at North Fifth, we have a kind of a community garden out there. Would it make you feel better if we, under the, say, the public facilities district section, that we added, say, after community centers, community gardens? And I don't, you know, maybe also in that section, tree nurseries or something along that lines? Or do you think community gardens is, is broad enough?
Ideally, yeah. Yeah, I would even like to see, if there's a large enough tract to land, I'd like to see it permissible to have, in effect, a commercial farm of some kind, but preferably one that was aimed at food for local consumption. So, like a vegetable farm, like...
Concept of urban farming or urban agriculture.
Like we used to have along Dry Creek, out west of the Moose Lodge.
Where the peony patch.
Peony Patch.
And then, yeah, and then they had, they were growing asparagus and other things there.
They were growing food products, yeah. Fruit crop, food crops, but that sort of thing on the, on either the publicly-owned land or the privately-owned land in these districts.
Well, we, and we don't know if it'll ever happen or not, but when we were looking at this, the, I believe that the, what Mr. Purney's referring to is the site that the county has identified, if they ever were to relocate their facilities from Kenwood Park into a new expo center, is the southeast corner of Schilling in Ohio. And that property would likely be annexed into the city and served by utilities. And when we were looking at the exposition facilities district, that was with that in mind, that that, those type of uses would, would be there. But we could certainly add agricultural activities to that one and community gardens to the public facilities district if, if, if that, you wanted to make that part of your action or recommendation.
I think that's a good point. There's some farm shows, there's one up at Grand Island, I can't remember the exact name of it, where they, they've had the show in the same spot for a number of years, and they, they actually farm and use that as part of their farming demonstrations. And that might open up another avenue for them for the use of that facility for a farm show, other than, you know, just the yearly fair or something, but...
Could that also, I'm just going to ask a question, I, could that also be handled through more planned development-type arrangement like we do so many other things? If it's unique to an area, yeah, like, like we do at PDD. If you have eighty acres and you want to farm forty of it, and it's in a public use, could that not be under PDD?
Yeah, the, it's, it's, I mean, it's not intensive agriculture, but, I mean, we, we have taken the position for years that in our Tall Weeds and Grass and Uncontrolled Vegetation ordinance, that agricultural crops can be controlled vegetation. So for years, the central mall grew alfalfa around the mall, and that, that's what their ground cover was there, and that was controlled vegetation. So to agree it was, it was farming activity. But I think what, what you're referring to is if, if you brought that into the city and you zoned it for expo... and you zoned it for expo facilities, but then they didn't build it for a number of years and it was farmed, you'd want to make that a legitimate activity.
Even if they did build, build it and still had a lot of land...
And it had a demonstration field or plot.
There is a local food movement across the land, and we may as well be ready to participate with that.
There's, I just want to mention, just think it through a minute, because on South Ohio, should that area now that's being developed by dealings have been public use for some reason? And somebody farmed that, and I'm not talking about orchards or tomato vines, I'm talking about bringing tractors in there on a regular basis. It has sort of a chilling effect on the property owners around it because of the dust. And so, those need to be looked at individually. I'm talking about if you have large acreages, 80 acres, 160, public use like the county, I'm not sure you'd, and you'd build all around it, would you really want farming going on, on that active wheat farming? Now, alfalfa's a little different, but, and that's what large acreages are used for.
And what, what some in the development community would respond to is, and you've got, it's occurred on South 9th and some other areas where for property tax purposes, it's advantageous to a property owner, as far as their holding costs, to, to show the county appraiser that they're using it. I mean, we've had vacant property on South 9th Street that's basically been, had crops on it, and they, they do that for property tax purposes to get it classified as agriculture. I mean, we, we kind of had that discussion, and his happens to be actually zoned agricultural. But Mr. Dooley's been out there on South 9th Street for years. Everybody agrees that the highest and best and logical use of that property is commercial, but he is out there farming it, and he's, he is doing that legally. But he's certainly isolated in that activity. But if, if what we're talking about is just agricultural activities that might be associated with a, a farm expo or something like that, I think it's appropriate to make sure that's covered.
I agree.
Well, if we gave them the out of putting that in the conditional use, then, then we're certainly not discouraging it.
That's right. Right, yes. Yeah, that, that's, that's a good way to approach it, to, that agriculture as the principal use could be a conditional use.
Yeah, I'd be fine.
So can we make these adjustments and still provide you a recommendation? Or would you all like to see?
Yeah, that would move it out of your court, and then where, where it would come back is eventually... And then it will take, it will take some work, but we'd basically, we'd have to identify all the owners of these tracks, which, of course, we believe is, except for the Sacred Heart St. Mary's Campus and Salina Christian Academy, it would all either be USD 305 or the City of Salina or Celine County. And then we would go through and say, tell you what they are, this is a fire station, this is a park, this is a golf course, this is this, the water plant, sewage treatment plant, and for you to make recommendations of whether those should be changed from what they are to public use.
I'd like to move it out of our court after a bit of time working on it, but I'd like to move the signs back into our court as quick as possible, because we really have some interest in looking at that for South and Central. And my question is, if we, if we look at signs and we have those as a condition or a part of these uses, public use, are we going to have to rezone before we can do a sign? So that's all discussion's going to have to have.
Right. What, what will... What will happen is, the, we'll come back to you with signed regulations for the public use district in these, and then South or Central Ohio would have to be rezoned from R1 to public use district, and then the new rules would apply.
And how long will that take?
Well, this, if, if we get it moved forward with the, the city commission adopting the new public use district, we will, we will come back as, within your next two meetings with the sign stuff, and they, they will catch up. And then the next step will be, the, the city commission has to basically endorse the concept of having a new public use district. Once they do that, we're going to bring it back to you for public hearings on what should be zoned public use. So that'll happen this spring.
Because, well, just, I'd just like to see the signs move forward somehow, because we've, we've been talking about those...
No, we're not, we just have to, we just, we're going to ask you, once you take action on this, to authorize us to bring you back a signed regulation amendment.
Great.
So if you, if you, if you want to recommend that this be sent on to the city commission and follow that up with a request that we bring back a text amendment on sign regulations, you could roll that into one motion.
I'd like to make that motion.
I, I would second Mr. Kennedy's motion to do that and adding the...
And adding the agriculture.
Agriculture as a conditional use.
And the community gardens to the...
Yep.
And we'll, we'll help Crystal get that motion captured, so.
It's called creative writing.
And we'll approve it with the next amendment.
I've got it all scribbled down right here, so.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Other matters?
We have a couple other matters for you that will, will do in no particular order. It's probably not of great interest to you, but if you're a planner, it's of great interest to us following what's going on over in Topeka. But it's just interesting, we, we put it in your packet, but basically, the Economic Development Group in Topeka had an agreement or contract with the Mars Candy Company, where Mars agreed to build a large plant there in Topeka. The Economic Development Group, what was so startling, I think, to everybody about it is that Mars Candy requested that, basically, a swath that extended two miles from the edge of the Mars Candy Plant had to be rezoned to industrial, because they, they didn't want a situation where they had nearby residential property owners or whatever objecting to how they operated their candy plant. Well, to give you perspective, a two-mile zone is the distance from Magnolia to Waterwell Road. So, so basically, the Mars Candy Company was asking to control what happened within a two-mile zone around their plant. And so, they're now having some public hearings over there in Topeka where there's a bunch of residential subdivisions and future residential land. And a lot of those people don't think it's really fair to have their residential property zoned industrial as a protection zone for the, for the Mars Candy Plant. So, they're having a series of, of public meetings over there. And of course, some of the people are a little bit critical for, of the Economic Development Group agreeing to that first, and then trying to work out the details of making that happen later. But basically, that it's taking, you know, whether it's residential subdivision or anything else that's within two miles of that area and, and creating a radius. And I think the thing that struck me was the two-mile, you know, I, I've heard of thousand-foot buffers or things like that, but when you're talking about a two-mile buffer area, that, that is pretty incredible. So, that is kind of a hot-button issue in, in Topeka and Shawnee County right now that we're, we're kind of following. We put in your packet just some information about how sand pits and quarries have been converted to other types of uses when their useful life was over. And then the biggest item of interest that may be in there, we just put the written decision in there from the district court on the BFR Metals versus City of Salina case. And for those that got the email from Mr. Bankston, basically, their questions were whether the planning commission and in turn the city commission had the lawful authority to modify the conditions placed on BFR Metals conditional use permit. The answer was yes, you did have the authority to do that. And then secondly, whether your decision and in turn the city commission's decision based on the findings of fact that you made was reasonable. And they concluded that, based on that written record and the findings and conclusions that you made, that your decision was reasonable. So, the, the short answer is that you were vindicated by the district court on both counts.
So far.
So far.
I appreciate the, the thank you from Mr. Bankston, but we should also thank him for the work that he did for us. And I particularly appreciate that courts recognize us as being reasonable people and that we have a right to change our mind if, if the...
And...
...apply on from our applicants.
The, the argument that the city's legal counsel made, that we were, the, the whole reason that we brought it back to you is that we thought how it was presented to both staff and the commission as to how that gate was to be used was misrepresented. And it, we, if how it was used was presented up front, I'm not sure that it would not have been addressed differently. And that was basically the, the argument was, and a lot of their factual basis was that the, how that was to be used was under, under-reported.
I, I did take the liberty of sending Mr. Bankston a thank you on behalf of the commission for his, for all the work that he did. He was very inspirational. Got a couple of quick, short things. Just want to say that I enjoy the planning and the planning news portion that you sent to us. Those are always very informational and stuff. And another thing I thought, I don't know how familiar everybody is with the, the city mapping service that we have, the online mapping service, but it's really interesting. I'd kind of like to maybe see just a little five-minute blip from Mr. Ganz and Mueller sometime. He's a great operator, and, and he gets his information across really good, and...
I think we just had our own study session this morning with Mr. Ganz and Mueller, and we're, we're talking about, we, we've done that once before where we invited people here, but it would be a good thing, since you're all laypeople, to have Mr. Ganz and Mueller come, say, at 3 o'clock for one of our study sessions here and do a walkthrough on the new property mapping, because we've gotten some feedback from exterior users, including Mr. Welsh, that it's not quite as user-friendly as, as the previous one. And that's why even city staff's having to get trained up on it. So, that's one thing we could arrange to do, is have Mr. Ganz and Mueller do a session down here and kind of walk you through what, what those different things mean. It's actually, information-wise and, and what you can do with it is, is a lot greater than what it was, but it's, it's more complicated and in some cases involve more steps. But the amount of information on there is just amazing.
Yeah.
And what, what you can do with it, where you can, you can take a map, you know, where you have zoning on it, and you can adjust it and, and vary it as to whether you want it to be a solid map or an aerial photo, so you can adjust it. So you, you can say, okay, I know that's zoned, I want to peel that back and look what it looks like in an aerial photo, and you can just go in and do that with a slide of a knob. If you want to know where utility lines are, fire hydrants, all those kind of things are on there. We now have every letter of map amendment for floodplain is on there. So if you want to have a, if you want to produce a map that says how many lots in this subdivision have lomas on them, you can go in there and do that now. You never were able to do that before. But that's, that's a very good idea, and we can, we can bring that in here.
Certainly interesting stuff. When we use it every time, it's, it'd be great to know more about it.
And you've got our, John, if you want to dial that other one up, you have to suffer through one more thing, where we talked about at our last meeting, the concept of neighborhood centers and community centers and how physically that might look from a forum standpoint. And one of the things I mentioned was the Zona Rosa Shopping Center in Kansas City, Missouri, that was identified as that. And basically, this is a shopping center, but these are actually, these are public streets that go through it. And basically, the, the pattern is, these are streets, the storefronts are right on the streets, and, and the parking is actually in the outside and also in garages. And I don't know, John, you've got some photo, this, this is what it looks like from an aerial standpoint, but you've got places in here where basically, these are public city streets, and you've got a series of storefronts that are basically right on the, the street there. And so, this is a street, and this is a street, and this is part of the, the commercial development pattern there, where the building sits right on the property line, and then the, the parking is out in remote areas. Again, this is a, this is a, a new shopping center that's developed. It's, when we, we talked about some of the concepts in the community center, neighborhood center, and moving buildings close and, and parking in behind and having continuity and connectivity, these are photographs of what the, and so it's, it's a lot of what you see in a commercial shopping center or even a mall, but the, the form of it is different where the, the emphasis is on walking. The other thing, this is part of Zona Rosa, which is also some housing, so that you do have some mixed use. But when you were kind of asking staff, well, what, physically, what does this look like in terms of a development pattern, or how is it different as opposed to the suburban shopping mall or the, the strip center approach, it, it goes back to more of a pedestrian orientation. And then there, obviously, it has the same amount of parking and all as you would have for the square footage, it's just arranged differently. So, we, we put some of these things loose in your packet or were emailed to you, but we just wanted to share with you some of these concepts that, when we talk about that type of thing, we're talking about, more about the form and the organization than we are about the uses. But with that, we will file a text amendment on sign regulations and bring that back for you. We have a, a conditional use permit for daycare at your next meeting. And then we have a Sonic there on South Santa Fe purchased an additional lot, and they want to rule that into their Sonic addition plat. That will be coming back to you at, at that time. And we'll, we will not put public use district back on your agenda again, except for the sign part. So, you, you are done seeing public use district on your agenda, and we're done putting it there, so.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or concerns?